All right, it is 6:30. We'll call the Monday, March 28th, regular city council meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now you can say anything. All right, Maggie, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I am asking the council to consider adding a lifetime fitness exercise equipment offer to the agenda this evening.
Okay. And if that gets approved, we'll add that to 7C for the lifetime fitness exercise equipment. All in favor, say aye. With one addition?
Aye.
Aye, I'll pull the same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Then we'll open up for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. And seeing none, we'll close public comments, move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull the same sign. Motion carries four zero. Then Maggie, that'll take us right into 7A1, the 2021 financial statement audit report.
Okay, Mayor Dodge and Council, this item, this evening is the presentation of the 2021 financial statement audit. So, as you know, on an annual basis, the city of mayor is required to have an audit completed. The city hired Abdo Financial Solutions to perform the audit, which was done between the dates of January 31st and February 2nd of this year. So Bonnie Schweiger.
Schweiger.
Schweiger. With Abdo Financial Solutions is here this evening to present the audit presentation. And then with that afterwards, I'm recommending, after the presentation, that if the city council has any questions, to feel free to ask them. Otherwise, to consider approval of the statement afterwards. So with that, I'll let Bonnie proceed.
Welcome, Bonnie.
Great. Well, thank you so much. So I'm going to go through with you a summary of our detailed audit. If you have any questions on the detailed audit report or the management communication letter, we can go into that as well. And if you, if anything comes up while I'm going through this, please feel free to stop me as well, and we can kind of talk about things as they, as they come to your mind as well. So, okay, so I'm going to turn to page three of the audit presentation and go through some of the technical pieces of our audit. And then next one down, there we go, perfect, thank you. All right, so I'm going to cover first the different things that we look at during the audit and the results, and then we'll go into the financial information. So first, I want to talk about our opinion that we issue. So that first kind of section there where it says unmodified opinion. We, you are engaged with us to issue an opinion on your financial statements. It's required by state statute, but also it allows people that look at your financial statements to put trust in them. And so that's really what that opinion does. That's what, that's what we do for the city. We did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, and that's exactly what you want, and it's consistent with what you've received in prior years as well. It tells people that use your financial statements, like bondholders and residents, that it's free of material misstatements, and that, that again, they can put trust in those financial statements. We also review compliance with Minnesota state statutes. So going to the second section there. The Office of the State Auditor tells us every year the different statutes that they want us to look at during the audit. And there's, there's a lot of them, from how you pay your bills, to how you run your meetings, and conflicts of interest, and a lot of differing other small things that you would hate me if I went into more detail on right now. So, we didn't have any findings this year. So it was a really good year from a Minnesota state compliance aspect as well. And then the third area that we look at is internal controls and then other compliance areas. And so as far as internal controls go, we're really not here to issue an opinion on your internal controls, but just to gain an understanding of them, and then include any disclosures in the report if improvements are needed. And so with your internal controls, we're talking about how you pay your bills and, and the different approval processes that you have around that. Or for payroll, how do you approve payroll versus approve the pay rates? And there, we didn't notice any significant issues, but if you go to the next slide, we do have a limited segregation of duties internal control finding. And that is an internal control area. We would not consider it necessarily something to be concerned about right now, but we include it in here because it's, internal controls do carry a certain risk factor with them. And we want you all to be aware that because you have a small number of staff, there's only so many people to process checks and reconcile your bank statements and do the payroll-related activities. And so, so you all need to be aware of your responsibility in the internal control process and, and take that seriously. We know that you do, but we feel like it's a significant area that we need to note in here. And we see this, this finding or this limited segregation of duties disclosure in probably about half of the cities that we work with, and especially the cities that we work with of this size. So nothing to be concerned about, but something to be aware of there. And the first finding on there that we have listed, the preparation of financial statements, that's another internal control area where your financial statements are an important part of your internal control structure, but you have an outside entity, us, prepare them. And they need to be reviewed carefully and understood that they are part of your internal control environment. Maggie does look them over. She does tie out to our, make our, make the journal entries that we propose and things like that. So, nothing to be overly concerned about there, but just something to understand. We have one new area that I want to bring up. So the Uniform Guidance Policy and Procedures, that is a new compliance area. It's not a compliance area with state statutes, but rather with federal compliance statutes. So something that was a little bit unusual with the audit this year, some of the funding that you got for your capital projects was from a federal source. And when that happens, you have to comply with certain other federal provisions, and you have to have very specific written policies about how you're going to comply. So not just that you comply, but you have to, you have to write out, and then you all have to approve those policies about how you're going to do that compliance. And we found that that was not in place at the time of the audit, which is not unusual. I would say it happens a lot of times when a single audit comes up. It maybe comes up once every 10 to 15 years for a city of this size. And we often find that those written policies are not in place. So I think we provided an example. So something to, to look at over the next year and make sure it's in compliance before you deal with any other large federal grants. So that's the one new finding or disclosure we have in, have in there for this year. Again, nothing to be overly concerned about. These are the ones that we included last year, so you can see the first two are the, are the same, and, and would be very hard to remove. You'd have to hire some additional staff to do that. The third one from 2020 was time period of payment. So you did have a Minnesota state statute compliance finding last year for not paying certain bills within the set time period. We were able to take that out this year, so that's really, really great to see. Okay, so now going into the financial results, this is an overview of your fund balances. So it can be helpful to look at your fund balance reserves compared to your budget. So you can see, how much do I have in my, my reserves at year end to pay for my next year's operations? The city has a policy of 50%, so you can see over the past five years where you've been in line with that policy. In 2020, there was a large decrease due to some planned, that was really a planned decrease, right? So you put some reserves into your capital funds, took it out of your general fund and put it into your capital funds to pay for some future projects. And then you can see there that that did bump back up above that 50% policy for 2021. And then you have your revenues and expenditure comparison here, so you can see what caused that increase for 2021. Overall revenues were about $50,000 over budget. There wasn't anything really significant there that caused that variance, some refunds and reimbursements and some contributions that were unbudgeted. And then in expenditures, that's really the, the fire department was under budget by about $40,000. And then Public Works was under budget by about $37,000, and then some other kind of small variances. So really, across the board, all of your departments were, were under budget. And then you did a small, small transfer out that was in budget, but overall, your general fund increased about $130,000. So that's a very healthy increase. And then for general fund revenues, here's an overview over the last three years. You can see where your major funding sources are. I want to point one thing out with taxes. So with taxes, you can see that the general fund allocation of your tax levy has gone down. And that's because you're shifting that to your capital funds. And so instead of keeping all of your general, all of your levy really into that general fund, you're now allocating out to set up reserves for capital funds, which is great. And so that decrease there that you see in taxes does not represent a decrease in your levy, just the allocation of your tax levy. You all, you all know that, but just wanted to point it out. And then in the other category, there's, that includes grants. That's why you see some jumps there. And then general fund expenditures by type, you can see what your programs look like over the last three years. And this does include current and capital expenditures, and so that's where you see some variation with your own capital needs. And then for special revenue funds, so separate from your general fund, which is for operations, you have special revenue funds that are mostly restricted for these purposes. So the EDA restricted for development opportunities, and then fire department contributions. So those are restricted based on specific contributions that are put in there. And then next is the capital project fund. So, so this is really where things shifted a couple of years ago to start funding these more specifically with tax levies. And so you can see what all of those reserve balances are. So overall, your capital project funds increased about $80,000 from last year. And then here are your debt service requirements. And so it can be really helpful to know kind of, for your debt service, when are things falling off? And when is some of that tax levy capacity going to open back up? I know with your guys' long-term plan, you're, you look at this and everything's kind of mapped out with what you need. But just a couple of things to point out, in 2023, you have your 2014 bond that's going to be repaid. And then in 2026, a couple of other bond issuances are going to fall off as well. And then for the water fund, so these two charts really illustrate what you're bringing in from, for your cash balances. The top one is focusing on your operations, and so you can see in the dark orange color there what you're bringing in for receipts. And we're comparing the receipts in one column to the dispersments and the debt payments in the next column. Because really, what you want is you want to have that, that dark orange color be taller than the debt payments and the operating costs in the next column. And that really allows you to build up some extra reserves in that fund. And so you, so you achieved that for 2021. You can see the last few years before that, you weren't, that wasn't able to happen, and so that's really positive. The decrease in cash on the second chart, though, that's really due to some re, timing of reimbursements with that large project that you had. So at the end of the year, there was a lot of, there was some reimbursement that hadn't come through from PFA yet. And so you use some of your, like, on-hand cash to pay for that, and that's going to be reimbursed in the next year. So overall, the water fund did have a pretty, a pretty good year from operations. And then here's your sewer fund. So you can see that the, the sewer fund, just the operating receipts alone are not able to cover the debt payments and the operating cost. One thing that this chart does not include is the tax levy that's going in here. So the sewer fund is getting some tax receipts into it as well. About $250,000 is, is budgeted to go into the sewer fund. And so that's making up that difference between where your receipts fall short of the debt payments and the operating cost. And then here's the stormwater fund. So the stormwater fund, it's very, very healthy, saving up some cash in here for future storm projects. There was a large payback of an interfund loan in 2021, so that's where you see that large increase in cash. There was a, the stormwater fund had a loan out to the sewer fund, and that was repaid in 2021. And here's just a chart that kind of summarizes all of the different funds that we just talked about. And so when you're thinking about your, your bank balance, that, your bank balance really comprises all of these different buckets that are holding your, your city reserves. And so you can see in 2021 how that total cash is broken out by fund. And now we're going to get into some different type of information here, some key performance indicators. So, so what we have here is some comparisons of your city for 2018 through 2020. We have the comparative information for 2021. That's, that's just, just you guys. We don't have comparative information for the most, this most recent year. What we've done is we've taken information from the Office of the State Auditor. They get the financial data from every single city in the state, and we compile that into different averages. And so we have first class four cities, which is cities between 2,500 in population and 10,000, so pretty wide population, keep that in mind. But that's how you're categorized by the Office of the State Auditor. And then we also have an average for cities in Carver County. And so you can see there on these two slides, we're focusing on taxes. And so first, the tax rate, so your tax rate has stayed fairly consistent over the past three years. And is right in line with the cities in Carver County, just a little bit below that. And then you have your taxes per capita. So some fluctuation there, as you would, as you would expect, but again, you're, you're under that, those peer groups. And, and none of this information, I'm saying good, bad, or otherwise, it's all very city-dependent, right? So, all right. And then here is your debt service expenditures as a percent of your total expenditures. This slide, I almost was thinking about taking it out for this year because it's kind of misleading. You had about 4 million more in expenditures this year due to the fire help project, the fire station project, which is included in the total of your expenditures. And so your debt service remains relatively consistent. It's just that your expenditures were so much more due to some of your capital activity. So you can expect that next year, that's, that is going to shoot back up again when you don't have all that capital activity. And here you can see that your capital expenditures per capita was relatively, relatively high, but if we look at the 2020 peer group information, it was fairly consistent. And then the water fund and the sewer fund debt service coverage. And so this is really looking at, how much do you have coming in in operating receipts to pay for your debt service? And so the higher this percentage is, the better. You want, you want a better debt service coverage. You want to be able to cover more of that debt with your operating receipts. And so for 2021, you were able to cover, so the, you have an 87% debt service coverage in the water fund, and then 62% in the sewer fund. So both did experience increases from the prior year, and so that, that is a positive trend. And here is our contact information, and we would love to hear from you. If you guys have questions anytime on anything, please feel free to reach out to us. And I would love to go over any questions that you have on, have on that information.
Perfect. All right. Any questions? Clarification?
So, is it normal that the water and the sewer funds don't, that they have more expenditures than they bring in?
Um, it depends on what your, the year looks like. I would say on like a, kind of a regular operating basis, you want to have more, you know, receipts coming in than your expenditures. But it is, it is very dependent on kind of what, what are you trying to save for? And then are you okay with supporting some of those operations from other places? It's not terribly uncommon to support, you know, some of the capital needs that you have with a tax levy. So that's, that's not something to be overly concerned about.
Okay.
And can I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this has been something that's been going on for quite a while because when we built our facilities, we were going off the assumption that we would have significant growth to fund. And so because.
Well, we've had it for a lot of years.
Yeah, so we're not getting that, the same revenues that we were projecting back then, and that's why we kind of did our, our water study or rate study, which we've been kind of increasing each year to, to catch up. But also, based on the understanding that we're only getting about 25 houses, 20 to 30, 25 to 30 houses a year. And so I think it's been quite a while that we've been having to levy that extra money to support the wa, the water sewer fund.
Yeah, that's, that's a really great thing to, a great thing to point out. And I think what's important about, about you guys is that, you know, this is just a snapshot and looking backwards, but you guys are continuously looking forward with that rate study and your long-term planning. And so because you have that in place, you know kind of how these things look in the future. So, nothing in that, that we saw in the audit would raise concerns about any of your flexibilities in the future to generate funds.
I think we have the right tools in place. It's just a matter of getting there. It's just taking some time to get there with the rate studies. We could have went in right away that first year and said, okay, everything's going up 20%, but we obviously want to step it, you know, for those reasons, and then not add too much for hookup fees for new homes, so we're not getting ourselves out of the market on those things. But I think we have the stuff in place, but just taking time to get there. And yeah, to the point, it's, I, I think, as long as I've been on council, it's always been this, I mean, it's been this way since '06. As we just struggled with the recession, and we build all the infrastructure.
If you build it, they will come, except they didn't.
They didn't. It didn't work out so well.
Okay.
And at some point, you have to build it anyways.
Yeah, and in a perfect world, they should balance out, and we should be fine and everything. They should be self-sustaining, but they're just not at this time.
Okay.
I think we're doing a good job managing the right stuff in place.
And then, do we know why there's such a large variance between the Public Works from 2020 to 2021? Is that the outsourcing cost on?
Oh, like that we were under budget?
Yeah, well, in 2021, Public Works was at like 570, and, excuse me, in 2020, they were at like 570, and then 2021, they were at like 450.
On that, on that chart we looked at?
Yeah.
I think it would be a couple more after this.
Looks like 36.
One more up. Oh, on.
Yeah, this one. And then I saw it further down in the financials as well, like it was.
So, sorry, I don't know if I'm looking at the right.
Yeah, I think this is the right one. And then, and that would just be because of some planned costs. So there was some, some planned purchases out of there in line with your.
Yeah, we had the, Kyle, what was the equipment we just bought?
Oh, we had the payloader, the dump truck. Is that the street mill and overlay, Maggie?
I think the Public Works title is, may not be correct.
It should, it's actually the capital project slash equipment.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so there's, hold on a second.
So there's, we added the Public Works building last year. And then there's a general capital. I wonder, I think that that.
On page 83, Maggie?
Yeah, so there was about 130,000 in capital acquisition that was made out of it. And go down maybe a little bit further. It's 81 of the audit.
This page showed like a.
Oh, on this page.
$240,000 variance from 2020 to 2021.
Okay, and then, and so, and this is going to be separate than, than that previous slide that we were looking at. So, so these are the expenses compared for, in total, for all of the, all Public Works purchases across all of the city's funds. And so there would have been just less, I think some less capital purchases done.
Yeah, I think 2020 was the year that we, I think, purchased, Kyle, was it the Plow? Yeah, so I think that was the Plow. It was, yeah, it was more capital expenditures in that department that year, and then reduced in 2021.
And similarly, excuse me, with like the public safety and?
Yeah, yep, we had, we purchased the truck in, I believe, 2020 as well, the new fire truck.
And that would also, there was a decrease in the fire-related pension liability, which, which would, which would create some negative pension expense within public safety as well. So, yeah. Those are great questions. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Certainly, if any do come up, get in touch with Maggie, and she can reach out to Bonnie or get stuff answered if there's other stuff. So thank you. I appreciate everything you guys did, and another great audit. And we'll continue to work through and get our plans together to resolve the, for sure, the third one. The first two, like I said, there's not a lot that can be done on those right now until we hire more people and.
Yes.
Separate some of those responsibilities, but.
And, and we're available for review of, you know, any, any policies that you guys do come up with. You know, you can definitely send those over to me before you.
Yeah, I do have, Jeff was able to give me some templates, and I'm almost reviewing them, and so I will get those back to you as soon as I can.
Yeah, I think, I think the audit went well. I think our statements look good. I think we're in a great spot to continue moving forward. I think everyone's done a great job and continue to do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Thank you.
All right, then I will look for a motion to accept the 2021 audit, the financial statement audit report.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll pull the same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us to 7B1, Mayor Hall, Mayor City Hall Improvements, carpet replacement and painting.
I'll do a little introduction, and then I'll let Kyle go through these reports or these recommendations. So, over the last, since I've been here, we've been kind of saving up from year to year to make some improvements to the City Hall Community Center Building. We, these are more internal improvements. We did have a big expenditure a few years ago when we had to quickly redo the roof, which was a high-expense item. So that, because of that, we kind of pushed off other improvements here internally. But, so now, this is the year that we feel confident that we want to move forward with these projects. As you know, we do, we're in need of some improvements in the offices and the community center. And so this evening, we are presenting a couple of those items. So I'll let Kyle go through those two items this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, over the past few weeks, city staff has been receiving quotes on replacing the carpeting within City Hall. Currently, the carpeting is staying torn and has greatly outlived its life expectancy. The new carpet will be commercial-grade carpet squares, similar to what was put in the fire station. Staff is recommending that sage flooring replace the carpet in the amount of $8,605. And we got three quotes from two other companies. And we do have money set aside in the Community Center Capital Outlay 410 Fund, which has about $46,000, and I think we have a little bit more.
We do. So we do have the capital funds, the Community Center Capital Fund, and then we have our general capital fund, so. But we would be paying this one out of the Community Center Fund.
Oh yeah, this carpet will be, this, the council chambers here, the offices, Maggie's office, and also redoing carpet in the entry way over there too, with some nice. and also redoings um carpet in the entry way over there too with some nice more durable indoor-outdoor carpet type stuff.
Any other questions for Kyle? Did you guys, when you looked at it, did you consider um maybe looking at maybe carpet and some of it? And maybe some of that like uh planking or not hardwood, but some of that vinyl that might clean up a little easier with people's shoes or boots, you know, where some of those high tra- whereas do we think this carpet's just gonna be?
Uh this carpet, it's, yeah, it's more commercial grade and it's more, it doesn't stain like this carpet does. I mean, the carpet they have nowadays, it'll literally just vacuum right up and eat off pretty much, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Kyle?
We're not doing the hallway or we are?
Uh that will come at a separate phase.
Oh, okay.
We're just getting more numbers on those, so.
We're looking not to go off on a tangent, but we're looking at doing uh more like of epoxy coating possibility in the hallway, so we're kind of. Yeah, that'll last the longest and it's actually pretty cost-effective, so.
All right, with that, then I'll look for a motion to approve sage flooring for eight thousand six hundred and five dollars to replace the carpet.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, then we'll go to seven B one B painting.
All right, over the past few weeks, city staff has also been receiving quotes on painting city hall offices and the entire community center area. These areas haven't had a fresh coat of paint in many years, if at all. Painting will provide some much-needed updating and freshness to the entire building. Uh staff is proposing to have ultra painting incorporated, conductor worked in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. City staff has worked with this company in the past and is very pleased with the work, they did a lot of work for us um at the Public Works Building and also out at the wastewater treatment facility. So kind of down the between the two companies, it kind of got broken down and between the hallway, the offices, the kitchen, the stage area, the main gathering space in the community center, and then also the gym. And again, uh money would come out of the four-ten fund.
Any other questions for Kyle? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the painting of city hall awarded to Ultra Painting in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion second, any further discussion?
Well, we have, we still have money then left over for the hallway then, or will that be like a year?
Yeah, so we actually um, yeah, so we have money in, again, in this community center fund. Um but we've also behind the scenes, like we've budgeted community center funds every year um for this project. But we, this commu- this community fund that we're spending out of the four-ten is an old fund, old capital fund. We've actually been putting the cap, the newer money that we've been levying in the general. And so we kind of have two funds that we're working with, um if that makes sense. One option would have been, I could have rolled this money into that other account. Um but since it's already there, another way is just using it and spending it down and then um but yes, the community center is is, we essentially have two funds that we've been putting money into for this project.
So then everything would pretty much be then updated in the the facility or?
Yeah, our goal is to yeah, paint, do all the flooring and then um we've been looking at other things here and there that we might bring to the council. Um but yeah, this time it'll at least freshen up kind of the aesthetics of everything. And then uh any other additions, we'll look at kind of.
Only thing that'll um, we're gonna look at the kitchen a little harder, we're just ripping out the cabinets, gonna probably just put up some open shelves. Um the ceiling in the kitchen and the lighting in the kitchen needs to be improved, so that'll be the next step. Um we do have asbestos on the floors, which is also kind of a, there's black mastic underneath from old, old tile. That's still there, so that needs to get taken care of, so that's kind of a hurdle that we kind of ran into, so um.
Can't you epoxy over that stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's why we're looking at epoxy and uh just encapsulating it and then we don't have to deal with it. But uh we did look at upgrading the kitchen to kind of be more of a full-scale commercial kitchen. But the price to move the vent hood, then we have to put in a makeup air unit and we gotta, it it the cost got real expensive real quick. So if that's something the council, I mean, we talk about it later if they really, if they really want to do something like that. But otherwise, if we leave it as is, we're good, so.
Yeah, I guess it depends on what our future goal, future goals are for the, for using that space. Um again, commercial kitchens are for people who come in and make food and package food and stuff like that. But um I guess it it all depends, it's like would we re, I think we were thinking moving everything and and updating it would be sixty to seventy thousand. And it's like we didn't know if it would recoup the cost um to do that, so uh.
We redo a couple of gas lines and kind of shuffle a few things around, I think it'll still, it'll still be a good improvement, a good benefit out of it.
Do you know, is there a need in the area when you talk about a commercial kitchen with the craze with the food trucks and all of that? That food needs to be prepared in a commercial kitchen?
Yeah, that's a good point, um nobody's asked us, well, I don't know, I don't think anybody's asked if we've had a commercial kitchen for that purpose, um but that doesn't mean in the future somebody won't.
There's quite a few food trucks around the area and different things, I just didn't know.
Coming popular.
Yeah.
One uses Lutheran High's.
Yeah, they do, they do, so it is, it is something we can bring to a workshop and maybe discuss further. Um and kind of get some guidance on how to move forward with that piece of it, so. I think the huge cost is is if you start making changes to that kitchen, you have to then bring it up to, it changes the code, so.
We would, the big, we would have to hire a mechanical engineer to design, spec and pretty much do everything to make sure we're buying the right makeup air unit, the right branch hood, the right everything, so engineers aren't cheap.
Any other discussion on the painting? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, and that will move us to seven C, the addition of the Lifetime Fitness uh potential exercise equipment donations.
All right, so Mayor Dodge and council, um this item is just uh we recent or within the last or today, um we were reached or told by Lifetime Fitness um that they did have, they have some equipment available. Um generally, when it reaches the age that they are done using it, they will make donations to fire departments. Um and so they do have some equipment um from Lake, their Lakeville Club that they're offering. Um and as you know, whenever a city, the city accepts donations, we have to go through a formal process. Um and that's uh passing a resolution, so right now they're offering it, but they are kind of on a timeline. They need to know if we're interested and so my goal tonight is just to bring it to you to see if we're interested, so we can let them know. And then if we are interested, then we would um bring it, whatever equipment we get, we would accept it through a donation resolution at the April eleventh meeting.
I'll look for a motion to approve city staff and fire chief to work with Lifetime Fitness and request any equipment they see see fit for donations.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
So all of this will go into the fire station?
Yeah, it would go on the mezzanine, that upper mezzanine area. So I think that was, that was a discussion that we had when we were building the building. Um we thought we would actually have to purchase the equipment, so to actually get a donation is quite, is pretty nice, so. And I did in give you a quick summary, there's a, I don't know, thirteen items that they're offering. And so um again, I think me and the fire chief are gonna go through those and um see which ones we're interested in and and those would go up in the mezzanine.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. That will move to uh city council reports, council member Melander, anything to report on?
Nothing to report.
Council member Wagner.
Nothing.
Council member Halt.
Not at this time.
Myself, I do not believe I've had a meeting since last council. Since last city council, I know we are getting one on uh scheduled for personnel committee to discuss some things, so we'll update that as as after we meet. And uh just a reminder that the mayor fish fry is Sun- this Sunday, correct? It's this Sunday, so hopefully be a nice day and we'll have a good turnout. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries four zero, we are adjourned. And we'll just, we'll jump right into the uh workshop meeting for Monday, March twenty-eighth. Uh we'll call the order and jump right in with Ridgeview Medical.
All right, so Mayor Dodge and council, uh this item for discussion is related to Ridgeview Medical and an opportunity for them to locate a uh within the city of mayor. So I I provide more in-depth information on Ridgeview in your packets, or I provided that in your packets for you to read. Um a short summary is that they're an independent nonprofit regional healthcare system that serves the southwest metro region of the Twin Cities. That includes Carver County. Um so beyond the hospital and campuses and clinics, Ridgeview provides an ambulance service called Ridgeview Ambulance. And their staff includes paramedics, EMTs and dispatchers. So they cover about nine hundred fifty square miles and again, that includes Carver County and the city of mayor. Um so in the service areas uh that are kind of far away, um farther away from the hospitals and clinics, it's not uncommon for an emergency service provider to locate ambulances and have hubs in communities. Um so here, the personnel will resp- be located in a spot where they can respond quicker uh within these communities. Um and as you know, response time and providing a quick, quick emergency medical care is vital when people need those services right away. So this solution allows for, again, faster primary emergency medical care while patients are being transported um to a regional hospital. So there have been discussions in the past, uh have been discussions uh at the city council level from time to time um on whether this opportu- if this opportunity did become available. Um and having a location in the city of mayor, uh kind of what we would do. So at the, at this time, this opportunity has come up, so Ridgeview has uh been in touch with staff. We've been having conversations about this potential um opportunity. And so this evening is kind of starting the conversation um surrounding that. So again, we've had conversations with Ridgeview about their needs as far as a location. Um two locations that have been considered at this time include the old fire station and the new fire station. And so that's just, that's kind of the discussion as well that we would be having. Um and I do have Mark Anderson with Ridgeview here this evening as well um to kind of talk through uh next steps as far as uh it would include, if we did move forward in agreement. And we would have, again, this would come back to future meetings for discussions on what that would look like. And um again, what the city would accommodate, what they would provide. And so, again, going back to those two locations, that that is a discussion we need to have. I know Mark has been on to both locations. Um when we did construct, when we did the final design on the new fire station, um the design originally did include a day room and so, but then when we were uh going through the final design for that station, uh we, that did get cut out. And so one concern would be if they were located in the new fire station, where would they um where would their personnel essentially sit and wait? Um cause usually I think those spaces include uh like a desk and a and some like a recliner and a TV and just kind of a, yeah, just a waiting space. Um and so the current fire station doesn't really have that and so one idea was, um we do have the police, the sheriff's department kind of uh as a hub in the old fire station right now. And we took Ridgeview, Mark over there and looked at that space and um decided that that is a potential option as well. Um it does have uh the old conference room area, it has bathrooms and a small kitchen and um. But anyways, so I I that's, this meeting is to kind of start that discussion. Uh ask if Mark has any more information he wants to provide, but then just to kind of ask questions and kind of see, see if there's any interest at the council level to move, to start working through this and and moving forward. Oh, I'm sorry, I went on your website, sorry.
Oh, it's all pretty accurate, so I thought I'd just give you kind of a brief overview about how we deploy our resources and what it'd mean for the city of mayor. Um so basically, we have, um like she said, showed a thousand square miles that we cover. We cover it with seven ambulances at our peak and five at night when we go down to our lowest level. So we have seven static bases that we cover from within Carver County and some of the surrounding counties. We we actually cover in eight different counties. Um and so our annual call volume, seventeen thousand calls, we go up about two and a half to three percent a year, um similar to our communities, the growth that we see there. Um mayor accounted for about a little less than one percent of our calls, a hundred and thirty-six last year, is not a terrible thing. People aren't getting ill or injured here, so that's not all bad. Um surrounding areas, so really, if we did decide to deploy from here, we'd be looking at covering mayor, New Germany, Lester Prairie, Winstead, and possibly Norwood Young America, which would account for approximately seven percent of our our call volume annually. So um kind of how it works is we're in a system status management. And so as calls go out in our service area, we shift trucks around to best um cover our geographic range, right? And so if we're in seven rig coverage, we have all seven of our posts um covered. If we go down to six rigs, you know, we take away from one of those. What it'd really mean for the city of mayor, kind of looking at our deployment, where you guys are situated, what we can cover from here. Um we would have a truck in mayor down to three-rig coverage, so anything from seven down to three-rig, we'd always have a truck here in town. Um it's not gonna be the same truck, it's not the same truck that comes back, as this truck goes out on a call and transports and a new truck comes in. So there is, you know, I, you know, full disclosure and, you know, as I talk to Andy and stuff, we do put a lot of wear and tear in on bases because we're constantly in and out of them, um kind of the way that we deploy. We'd be open to either option, um I know that we have looked at both of them, whatever's, you know, best for the city. Um I would tell you with these, historically, we don't pay rent, um it's kind of, you know, obviously a community benefit to have us in the community. And so we have standalone bases, we're in fire department, stuff like that, we'll share utility costs, we, you know, we'll pay for our internet, our cable, those kind of thing, cosmetic improvements, you know, we take care of. Any damage that we do, yes, we ding doors, I said, we've spent about twenty thousand dollars a year on garage doors, so. Um that happens from time to time, yes, very disheartening because our budget allows for about eight thousand and we usually hit about twenty on that. Um so, yeah, that's that's typically how it's structured, um you know, we have base locations, let's say um Chan Hassan and Minatrista, for example, where we have standalones, where it's like a dollar lease annually and then we help with some of the, you know, utility costs and stuff like that. Generally, if we're basing in a city, we'd like um, you know, for the city to plow that area, take care of the grounds. A lot of times, it's the, you know, the major building stuff is on the city and kind of the cosmetics insider on us. And you know, if we have to replace carpet carpet or wax floors or anything like that, we'll, you know, we'll do that. We kind of have an ongoing maintenance schedule with that, so that's kind of the the basic overview. Um you know, like I said, it's it's generally very beneficial to a community to have us there, especially, you know, i- if you were the seventh in that seven-rig coverage, not as much, right? Because we basically never get there or very rarely get there, but being kind of where we we think that we, you know, have you guys situated be, you know, once we're in three-rig coverage, we'd move to Waconia and Watertown, so you always, actually mayor, for the size of city, always has great coverage. Um because Watertown's always pinned for us because we cover into Wright County, so geographically, you guys are in a. 'cause Watertown's always pinned for us, because we cover into Wright County, so geographically, you guys are in a great area for us to cover you. But I think that, you know, it'd be beneficial for us to help cover that west and then north of here, to be in the city of mayor, so. We're excited about the, the opportunity and the prospects, so, do you guys have any questions for me?
This is just re-looking at the, the coverage area you said.
Yeah.
You're not adding a truck.
No, no, this is, this is.
Where, where would you be coming from then? Where are you gonna uproot?
Oh, um, well, we're kind of overall looking at our deployment again, because, you know, the way that Carver County's grown, um, you know, forty, forty-five percent of our calls are east of Victoria, basically. Between Chaska, Chanhassen, that's the vast majority of our calls, so we really have to kind of, you know, try to keep stack to the east. And so we used to cover a lot more in Norwood, well, we've kind of pushed that a little bit to the east, now we're more so in New Germany, which if we can push a little further east again, would be beneficial for us, just because of that volume on our east side. But, you know, we also have to be very conscious, 'cause there's a lot of communities out here that need coverage as well, so, you know, regardless.
And is it a twenty-four, seven, or?
It's a twenty-four, seven, so we drop, after eleven PM, we drop down to five rigs. Um, and so you'd be in that five and four rig coverage, and we might even look at that, that even a potentially in a three rig at night. Um, nights are slower for us, you know, but, you know, we are running twenty-four, seven, and those trucks are moving twenty-four, sevens, so. Yeah.
Any other question? I, I don't have any more, I, I'm certainly all in favor of working, something I'm working with Ridgeview to see what we can do.
Absolutely.
Not only is it a benefit for our community, but just in the whole restructure of things and, and how you guys look at it all the time, that's just how, and I, I think it seems to make sense.
Maybe between Mark and Andy and Maggie, they can come up with some sort of a proposal.
Yeah.
You must have a standard contract, like you said.
We, we do, we don't have as many as we should, we should have seven, but we have a lot of handshake, handshake agreements on those, so. Um, I do have some, you know, standard language that kind of just spells out, you know, lease agreements and our responsibility opposed to the city's responsibility. So we do have a basis to kind of work off of, and it'd be good for us to formalize all of them again, so.
Open to either building, I think it makes sense to be in the new one, just because it's a new building versus an old dingy one.
Well.
I still think that one without a day room's gotta be better than the old one.
Not all of our bases are very fancy, I mean, we, we typically don't spend a ton of time there, I mean, I'm open, but, you know, that, I would definitely defer to the fire department on that.
Keep in mind, it may get sold.
Yeah.
And then.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
You know, it's, it makes sense, you know, but
Yeah.
we're not down the path of selling it yet, so.
Yeah, and I, I think if we were, if we occupied the old, we'd probably put a minimal investment in, in fixing up that, that area, just, you know, make it, you know, new paint, wax the floors, stuff like that, and, you know, make it suitable, um, you know, to occupy for a while, but, I mean, if, if the new station's maybe the direction that, that Andy and, you know, the fire department and the council and yourself wanna go, I mean, we're open to that for sure. It's just, you know, I wanna make sure that, you know, that we're good neighbors and, and good, you know, good partners in that, so.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess my personal opinion is to be in the new one, but that's, I'll let you guys, a- and, and some of that just has to do with the extra bays we put in specifically for this, I think we owe that to our community to do what we said we were gonna do, so I think we should consider that at least. You know, we added that whole extra section, hoping would, Ridgeview would come.
Yeah.
You know. But that's, but if it turns out it's the old one, I can, I can get on board with it.
Yeah, my only concern would be the wear and tear and the twenty thousand dollars a year on a brand new station, like, that's my first.
Yeah.
Let's see how bad they damaged the old one before we let them in the new one.
No, no, it's not, it's not that bad. It's not that bad, and, you know, I mean, honestly, if you guys wanted to reach out, like, we've been in Watertown forever with their fire department.
And wear and tear on the floors.
Very good relationship there.
And their new floors will keep up on, I mean, that, that's just normal stuff.
I would defer to Andy on that, right, like.
It's just we're, you know, compared to the fire department, we're in and out a lot, you know, throughout the day, so. Yes, yes, we can, we can do that.
So with that being said, then maybe the new station is a better place, 'cause there isn't houses and community, right, if they're in and out a lot of times, you know, at night, I don't know if you're leaving immediately with sirens going and.
We try not to, um.
I mean, but again, something else that I think should be considered for the residents that live,
Yeah.
you know, near that area, there isn't a lot of residential housing.
You're right, keeping some of that traffic into the, uh, business, uh, in the industrial park, it seems to make sense in a neighborhood, but.
Yeah, but I mean, the fire department's been there for, you know, fifty years and it's never been an issue.
No, but when we're talking, calling through a week, two, three, four nights.
Right, right.
A much higher volume, so again, just, right, I would defer to Andy and.
Andy and Maggie.
Yeah, I'd say continue to work forward, start working with them, see what we can get set up, and I think it's great, I, I think it's a benefit to the community.
Absolutely.
I wanna get on, on this lifetime equipment too, so.
That's what I was gonna say, you're, they don't have to be sitting in chairs anymore, they can go work out.
That's right, that's right.
They'll be in the best shape.
Absolutely.
We'll have three trucks parked at the mayor fire station.
Yeah, so I, I'm assuming then that it makes sense to move forward and continue discussions and looking at those contracts, and I think it'll come back to another workshop as far as our recommendation, as far as a site and what we think would work best, so.
Yeah, sure, yeah, and we're, we're absolutely open to any of the options, you know, so, yeah, I, I think that we can connect and, and kind of get the ball rolling, we kind of have the same thing going on in Chanhassen right now, so, you know, it'll be probably a good time for us to just reexamine our whole deployment.
Perfect.
All right.
All right, well, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark.
You got everything you need then, Maggie?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Then we'll adjourn.
Yeah.
Before they, before they do that.
Oh, jeez.
For your kids, you don't wanna like.
No, they should be in better.
All right.